All right, it is five thirty and webcast is live, so we'll go ahead and call to order. Our, I guess it's our public work session. And first thing on the agenda is a presentation on the financial condition, our DOAB report. And Mr. Jaworski is John, the short straw this year and gets to do that for Dr. Glaze.
Apologize in advance, again, this is, there are a handful of things in our line of work that are kind of, when you check the box, make sure these things are done, this is one of those things, make sure it's just an annual checkup essentially on our financial situation. Again, we give financial updates every single month, so none of this should be a surprise. You're like, it's a little weird, and I'll talk about here's, this data is all from 2024 calendar year. So without any further ado, I'll get into it. This presentation is our annual distressed unit appeal board or DOAB financial condition report. It's required by Indiana Law and reviewed by the Board of Finance. It provides snapshot of the district's overall financial health using standardized state report indicators. Again, like I mentioned, it's important to note, the data shown tonight reflects calendar year 2024, which is the most recent year for which completed and finalized information is available through the state's reporting process. While there is always a timing lag with this data, it represents our most recent complete financial picture and provides a reliable basis for evaluating the district's financial condition. House and Rule Act thirteen fifteen from two thousand and eighteen establishes Indiana's fiscal and qualitative indicators under the direction of the DOAB. These indicators are used statewide to evaluate the financial condition of school corporations. During the 2019 legislative session, Senator Old Act five forty-nine added a requirement that during the annual Board of Finance meeting, the superintendent or designate me present a written assessment of the schools corporations, school corporation financial condition using these indicators. There's no prescribed format for this report, so this presentation fulfills that statutory requirement and is based on the most this for Tipton Community Schools. DOAB evaluates school corporation financial condition using six fiscal indicators. Number one, average daily membership, fund balances, annual deficit or surplus, fund balances as a percentage of expenditures, revenue by type, and then operating referendum revenue as a percentage of total revenue. Each indicator is derived from state reported data submitted by school corporations and compiled through the DOAB dashboard. Again, all this is public information, and I can share that website with you if you wish. The average daily membership indicator reflects enrollment trends that directly impact state tuition support. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Tipton Community School Corporation reported a fall ADM of thirteen hundred and fifty students. Over the past decade, ADM has shown a gradual but consistent decline with enrollments stabilizing briefly around the twenty twenty-two before resuming a downward trend these last few years. This pattern aligns with broader community demographics. District serves as an estimated population of about ten thousand three hundred and twenty-four residents, and enrollment changes appear to be driven by demographic shifts rather than programmatic changes. Because fall ADM establishes funding for the first half of the budget year and spring ADM establishes funding for the second half remains a key financial planning priority. The fund balance indicator reflects ending cash balances across all funds. DOAB data shows that total fund balances increased significantly in recent years, particularly from twenty-one through twenty-three, before moderating in twenty twenty-four. These changes correspond with capital project activity and timing of bond issuances. Again, it's important to understand that a substantial portion of total fund balance was held in capital and debt-related funds. Those balances are restricted and not available for operating expenses. Education operations fund balances remain comparatively smaller and have to be monitored closely. Again, overall, DOAB classifies Tipton's fund balances as adequate and appropriate when evaluated in context. So again, no surprises here, this is pretty much status quo. This table shows our ending fund balances by major fund category for calendar years twenty-three and twenty-four. So again, rolling back two years and not comparing between the year prior to the one we're reporting on. The most important takeaway here is the change in total fund balance, which declined approximately fifteen million in twenty twenty-three to about seven and a half million in twenty twenty-four. That change is almost entirely explained by the reduction in capital funds, which dropped from just under ten million to approximately one point six billion. That's what happens when you spend capital funds is that's not a fund that we hold on to, we spend those dollars. This reflects, again, the planned drawdown of construction and capital project funds as projects progress and were completed. It's not a result of new operating losses. Operational important, operationally important funds remain stable. The education fund increased approximately six hundred and seventy-six thousand to about a million dollars. The operations increased from about one point two million to one point five million. And again, the rainy day fund remained just over that two million dollar mark. Again, negative balances and federal stimulus funds reflects timing of reimbursements, not structural deficits. Again, the way that funding works with federal is a bit wonky, so it doesn't necessarily reflect properly here. And those are resolved through regular IDOE reimbursement. So we pay for upfront, we get reimbursed later in the year. That's why those funds look a little bit off. This table focuses specifically on the education fund, cash balance over time, expressed both in dollars and as a percentage of the appropriate budget. In twenty-four, the education fund ended the year with cash balance of approximately one point one million, representing nine point six percent of the appropriated budget. This is the highest percentage in the past seven years. This improvement reflects, again, careful expenditure control, alignment of staffing to enrollment, and intentional rebuilding of education fund reserves after several lean years. For context, prior to twenty-one, education fund balances were consistently near or below six percent. Current level represents a positive trend and supports instructional stability. So again, that's all positive there. The slides, this slide shows the operations fund cash balance over time. While the operations fund cash balance increased slightly in dollar terms from twenty-three, twenty-four percent of budget decline from thirty-three percent to about twenty-seven and a half percent. Again, that decline is expected and appropriate, given the increase in operational costs year over year, capital maintenance activity, and then the intentional use of operations fund resources for facilities, transportation, infrastructure needs. Importantly, a twenty-seven percent operations fund balance still represents a healthy operating cushion and does not indicate fiscal stress according to that. So again, while that number has decreased, that is still a positive thing for us, we're still doing well. On this slide, table shows overall cash balance across all funds, including the rainy day fund as a percentage of the total appropriated budget. So in twenty twenty-four, the overall cash balance declined to approximately twenty-six point eight percent, down from twenty-six percent in twenty twenty-three and higher levels in earlier years. The downward trend is intentional and expected driven by, again, completion of construction projects, planned use of restricted capital funds, and avoidance of unnecessary accumulation of idle balances. We, Dr. Glaze and I talked about, want to have a healthy cash balance, you also don't want to have this massive, you know, egg that you're sitting on that, you know, what are you doing with the public money and not using it appropriately? So again, trying to find the strike that healthy balance between those. Again, from DOAB's perspective, that level remains and the acceptable range and supports finding of financial stability. This indicator compares total revenues to total expenditures on a calendar year basis. From twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-one, expenditures exceeded revenues reflecting a period of operating pressure. Beginning in twenty-two, revenues exceeded expenditures resulting in that those annual surpluses used to be from twenty. In twenty twenty-four, the dashboard reflects a return to that annual deficit, driven by the timing of expenditures relative to revenues. Again, the fluctuation is not uncommon and is not by itself indicating any kind of financial distress. When viewed alongside fund balance trends and restricted fund activity, the corporation remains, again, financially stable. So again, you're going to have that up and back between that from a year-to-year basis. This table, again, compares revenues and expenditures for calendar years twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, in twenty-three, the corporation reported a surplus of approximately one point four million. For the corporation reported a deficit of approximately seven point seven million. Again, it's really important to interpret this correctly. The twenty-four deficit is not a result of operating overspending, that is not, we decided to spend eight million more than we should have. Instead, it reflects, again, a significant reduction in that debt revenue, which dropped to zero in twenty twenty-four. Continued expenditures tied to capital and operations commitments. And then the timing of revenues, like I said, versus expenditures in the calendar year, going back to that whole federal spending. When viewed alongside the fund balances and restricted fund usage, that deficit does not indicate, again, any financial distress and aligns with the planned financial activity. Indicator four, DOAB evaluates fund balances of annual expenditures to assess sustainability. For TCSC, this percentage peaked above fifty percent during the periods of major capital activity, declined steadily through twenty twenty-one, and stabilized between twenty-eight and thirty percent since twenty twenty-two. The twenty twenty-four value of approximately twenty-nine point four percent, again, reflects a value that is within an acceptable range when considering fund restrictions and planned expenditures. This indicator, again, supports continued stability while reinforcing the importance of long-term financial planning. Second to last one here, revenue by type includes local tax revenue, state tuition support and grants, federal revenue, debt revenue, and other local revenues that we have. So this is a kind of a summation of all of those. The DOAB dashboard shows predictable state and local revenue streams with noticeable spikes in debt revenue during years of bond issuance. So again, when we collect bonds, we see a spike in revenue there as expected. Tipton does not exhibit excessive reliance on any single revenue source and revenue patterns aligned with approved capital projects and long-range planning. So again, all things are par there. This table here for indicator five shows revenue by source for twenty-three and twenty-four. Again, the most notable change, and we've talked about this before, is the elimination which declined from twelve point six million to zero. Again, that explains much of the year-to-year change in total revenue and the reported deficit. Other revenue resources remained stable or increased. For example, state revenue increased approximately eleven point seven million, local tax revenue increased about seven point seven million. Federal revenue remained relatively consistent, and then operating referendum revenue remains at zero. Again, that just confirming that the district does not rely on referendum funding for operations. Overall, revenue patterns are consistent with expectations and reflect the conclusion of a major capital financing cycle. So again, all very typical standard stuff. Most exciting graph of the entire presentation, TCSC continues to not have an operating referendum. So there is nothing to show in twenty twenty-four which related to referendums. All operational funding is derived from the state tuition support, local tax revenue, and other non-referendum sources. The indicator confirms that the district is not dependent on a single funding source, specifically referendum funding for day-to-day operations. In summary, DOAB fiscal indicators show that TCSC is financially stable. Enrollment decline remains the most significant long-term challenge, as we know. Fund balances are adequate, and twenty twenty-four annual deficit does not by itself indicate any kind of financial distress. The deficit for twenty-four is, again, largely due to that absence of a debt revenue that was present in prior years combined with the use of those capital funds. Again, therefore, no corrective actions are required at this time. Administration will continue to monitor ADM and demographic trends, align staffing expenditures with enrollment as appropriate, and then provide transparent financial updates to the board monthly. So that is it for that presentation. Thank you all for your time. Does anybody have any questions related to our DOAB report? Like I said, all this information is publicly available, so if you're professional online, go to DOAB website and put your heart out with all this information that's available there. It was, it was a fun little project. I appreciate Dr. Glaze and Brooke humor in me and allowing me to present this and kind of coach me through some of the finer points of it, so.
Very interactive website, so if you want to go in and play, yeah, do that. It's, again, the reason why we have to do this report is because of school corporations that have been taken over by the state because of financial distress and which I, I don't fear anybody in that world right now, but that's the reason why we do this. And I appreciate Scott jumping in and doing it.
Thank you very much.
All other questions? All right. Thank you, Scott. Next on our agenda is a presentation about the U.S. Infrastructure Company. Darren and Eli are here to talk to us about that. So if you turn on your mic, Darren, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for allowing me to present today. My name is Darren Haynes. I'm the Senior Manager of Career and Technical Education for USIC, otherwise it's United States Infrastructure Company. I do have a little video queued up that'll tell you a little bit more about what we are and what we do, so if you want to play that, Scott.
A small town main street. A backyard barbecue. But it's beauty runs deeper than that. Below the surface. Where every day, twenty million miles of underground infrastructure unite this country and everybody. The communication lines that connect us. The water that flows through our daily lives. The gas and electric. They give us our power. In USIC, we make that something worth protecting. So every day, everywhere in America, over ten thousand of us are out in force locating, marking, mapping, and safeguarding this invisible network that unites us all. So what's below the surface stays open and running, and what's above it keeps growing, keeps moving forward. Join us, USIC. Feeding from the ground up.
Sorry, Eli, you weren't in that video, but he'll be in one a little bit later. But that's, that's what USIC does. And so, back in twenty nineteen, COVID hadn't really taken us by storm yet, but we were struggling to hire. We were struggling to find qualified candidates to do this work. And it is a niche skilled trade, just like being an electrician or a plumber, a welder, auto mechanic. Once you learn the skilled trade of underground utility locating, you can do it anywhere in the country for any number of companies. So we thought, and, and actually, my wife kind of prompted me on this idea. She said, have you thought about getting into the CTE arena at schools? And so, no, I hadn't, because I'm not as smart as she is. But, so I went to my boss and we kicked around this idea. And I just happened to be good friends with the school board president and Elwood at the time. And he said, I can get you a meeting with the Heinz Career Center director, and we can talk about it. So we met with them. They thought it was a fabulous idea, but of course, no one at the state school board level knew what we were. So after a long uphill fight, you know, I did get some audiences with the Department of Workforce Development, Dr. Jenner and her, her team up there, and we made it happen. Tony Harrell was a big help as well with the state CTE department. We ran a trial for two years at the Heinz Center, highly successful. Mr. Eli was in the first year of that trial. And we hired, we made offers to all but one student in our class. We had twelve students total, we hired eleven. We've seen that same success year after year. The students that go through our program, it's free for them, they don't, it, we provide all the PPE, all the training. We actually hire them in March, so the kids who are in our program now, here in about a month, they're going to get a job offer from us, and if they want to accept it, we will start paying them to go to school. They come to school, they get paid twenty bucks an hour, we give them a company truck to drive to and from school, we pay for all the fuel, the maintenance, everything. And then when they graduate, they have a full-time job offer waiting for them. So back when COVID hit, we learned very quickly that this country did not have the underground infrastructure to support sending everyone home and working from home. The broadband just couldn't hold up. So we've seen what's called the fiber wars between companies like Windstream and Comcast and Google, racing to get new infrastructure in the ground so that they can offer their services to, to homes and businesses. What that caused was that said, okay, we don't have enough underground utility locators. Fortunately for us, we were deemed an essential service, so the government said, put this little form in your vehicles so you can go out and work and you're not going to be stopped when we told everyone else to stay home. So fast forward, twenty twenty-three, after running the, the program for a couple of years at the Heinz Center, our program was deemed a locally created pathway and was voted on by the state board. Dr. Jenner asked me an interesting question, and don't take this the wrong way, but she asked me, why don't more businesses partner with education to do things like this, to train students to hit the workforce right out of high school? And I told her, you guys make it too hard. And it is, it's extremely hard. You know, the Department of Workforce Development, as great as they are, you know, to become a locally created pathway, we had to offer industry-recognized credentials. So the locating industry does not have an industry-recognized locating certification. So I had to, you know, get creative, and all of our locators are credentialed through FEMSA. FEMSA is the Pipeline Hazers Material Safety Administration, which is an arm of the DOT. Any locator who locates gas pipelines and their components have to hold four credentials from FEMSA. So that's how we were able to get in with the DWD and get our credentials on the state-approved industry-recognized credentials list. Therefore, that gave us that pathway approval. So my problem now is, I have this opportunity. I don't have the students from Tipton. I run eight schools, seven schools currently, have two new schools opening this fall, one in Katy, Texas, and one in Denver, Colorado. Elwood, the Heinz Center. Eli was in the first pilot group. I've had two other students. I had one the same year that he was in, and I had one last year. The only problem with that is they were not employable. You know, one of the things that Dr. Jenner made clear was I couldn't use my program as a, as a hiring pool. You know, I couldn't say, okay, you can come to my class because you meet all the USIC criteria to be in the class. Just like, you know, being in the welding class or the auto mechanics program, you have to allow kids to take your class just for the fun of it if they want to. So we do. We hope that they learn enough throughout the school year that they make a decision and say, hey, this is something I might want to try. But there are certain criteria that they have to have to get a job. One of them is a driver's license. Far too often, a lot of seniors nowadays don't even have their driver's license, which is crazy. Our whole social life when I was young was, you know, revolved around having that driver's license. So that's why I'm here today. I'm here to ask for your help and, and ideas on how, I, I've talking, I've talked with, you know, Mrs. Glassburn and Mrs. Capshaw, and I, I just don't think, nothing, nothing against them. I don't know if I'm just not doing a good enough job of getting in front of the students and letting them know what the opportunities are with this program. And I'm open for suggestions to do that. In front of you, you have a folder, it's kind of, it's what I call my promo pack. These are the things that, that a student who finishes our program can expect to be offered, you know, if they do choose this, this pathway. One of the, one of the great things is this new, this new promo that we have now at Indiana Tech. So our curriculum has been approved through Indiana Tech for twelve credit hours towards a, a degree. That's one thing that, you know, I've, I've struggled with is a lot of times they ask me, well, is your, is your program a dual-credit course? And I had to tell them, no. You know, we don't, we don't discourage college, don't, don't take that, you know, that I'm saying that. But we, we want to offer them a pathway for kids who don't want to go to college, who don't like school. And you'll probably hear that from this young man behind me when he, when he talks, school was just not his thing. You know, we don't have the opportunities that we used to have when I was younger. You could get out of high school and go to work at a factory and make a decent living. You can't do that now. The factories that do hire kids right out of high school really don't pay a living wage either. Like I told you before, these students, they'll start making twenty dollars an hour while they're in school, and they get raises every year. There's never, there's not a cap, there's not a pay cap on utility locating position at our company, which Eli will attest to. I don't know if he'll tell you how much money he made in twenty twenty-five, I'm kind of curious to know, but, you know, they make great money. You know, we have some utility locators that make six figures, and they didn't, they didn't have to go to college. Everything that they need to know, we teach it to them. So I have, I'm a member of ACTE, which is the Association for Career and Technical Education, both the federal chapter and the Indiana chapter. I do have the privilege of talking with lawmakers on February the fifth down at the State House. Senator Jim Buck and Representative Van Natter about changes that we can make to help CTE in Indiana. I told you I have seven schools total. I'm at the Heinz Center in, in Elwood. I'm at Area Thirty-One at Ben Davis Pike Career and STEM Center, the Area Career Center in Hammond, and Elkhart Career Center here in Indiana, I mean, two locations out in Oklahoma. This fall, I'll be in Texas and Colorado. But I have to admit, when I go out to Oklahoma and I visit those CTE centers out there, they are doing something different. They, I don't know where they get their money, but they throw a ton of money in CTE. Those CTE centers out there look like college campuses. And the, the thing that blows me away the most is the sending schools that send their students to these career centers don't have to pay the career centers a dime. Career centers are funded by the state, and I know that's probably not, you know, feasible here in Indiana. Maybe, maybe Senator Buck will listen to me and say, hey, let's use some of that five billion dollar surplus that you guys talk about at state level, let's use some of that on CTE because it's needed. But I need some ideas. All of my students currently in the class at Heinz are from Elwood and Alexandria. They send, you know, I have a full class, and I know that there are other kids like Eli here in Tipton. I know, I live here. I didn't grow up here. I finished my high school career here, graduated in Tipton in eighty-nine. I call this my home, and I, I know a lot of people here, and I see a lot of the kids that leave Tipton. Funny story is, my stepson, Ben Scott, he graduated from Tipton, went to IUK, got his degree in sports management. He works for me. He works for USI as a locator. Makes great money, you know, supporting his family, about to have his second child, very proud of him, but he makes a living wage. I just, I, I need help, guys. I don't know what to do. I want to see more kids from Tipton succeed. I just need your help in getting them there. So I know Eli is not, he told me how, he's a terrible public speaker, so I told him, if he wanted to come up and talk with me, I'll ask him some questions and he can answer them. Mostly, I just want Eli to talk about what this program did for him and, and, you know, what your, what your options were. I know when I've talked to your mom and dad, you know, they said that they didn't know what your options were going to be after high school. They really didn't. And so, but what did, how did you like the class? What did this class mean to you?
I absolutely loved the class personally. I'm a very hands-on kind of person. I did not do well behind a desk at all. And.
What, what about, what, what, what was about the class that made you engage? You know, we're going to see a video in a minute, although you don't talk in the video, we can see you in the video, but you're very engaging in the class. I remember because I started off being your instructor before I hired an instructor, you know, and.
You and James Brenner made the class fun. Like you guys are why I would. Like, you guys are why I was so interested.
What's some of the things that, if you could talk to a, a junior right now, what's some of the things that you would tell a junior who might not want to go to college, might not want to go to the military, they want to take that other path, they want to take the employment pathway, and say, you know, what, what, what would you tell them, you know, about the program that would interest them? Money?
Yeah.
All the kids like money.
I have a new truck that I just recently bought, so money is definitely a really good front of that.
Do you live at home with your parents?
No, I moved out, almost as soon as I could. And the future that this company could bring you is just great in general.
How old are you?
I'm almost 22. February.
You go for something for about three years?
Yep.
How long is the program? They started as a junior and they finish as a senior?
No, it's senior only.
Senior only.
They start their senior year, full academic school year. And the reason why is because, you know, some of the things, you know, we, obviously, we don't have enough curriculum to be a two-year program. You can learn all of this in six months, and that's what we try to do. We start with the in-class instruction, we have BR training, we've got a lot of state-of-the-art equipment, but then the second half of the year, like what students are getting into right now at all the schools, is they're going out and they're doing actual 811 tickets with their instructors. It turns into more of a work-based learning scenario then because, hey, we're going to pay you, we're going to give you a company vehicle, you're going to be one of our employees that just still happens to be at school. And so they need to have a driver's license. So that's one of the main reasons why we said, well, we need to stick with seniors on this because they have to meet that criteria.
Darren, do they have to be 18?
No.
That's a big thing with right now with the legislature and, you know, insurance, so that's great.
No, they can be 17. The only stipulation with our compliance insurer is that they have no moving violations on their driver's license at 17. And then, you know, we follow all of the minor work laws and things like that. In school, you get, you know, two and a half hours a day of work. So, you know, we don't, we follow all those.
Yep. That's a big thing right now in the legislature, I know. So that's been the issue with more of a work-based, hands-on, is because, so I'm glad that that's worked out. Yeah, guys, that's great.
Darren, when you say, I need your help, what do you, can you like practically tell me what you mean by that?
I would like some ideas on how I can get my program in front of the students. You had, you had an event over at the 4H Building a couple of months ago, I attended that. And sadly, like I said, I'm not throwing anybody under a bus here, but every student that I've talked to said, one, they knew very little about the Heinz Center, and two, none of them knew anything about my program. I take that back. One young man, Gael, who happens to be in my wife's choir, came to see me, because maybe my wife was, hey, go see this guy. But yeah, it's just, I think we're still stuck in a, in a day and age where the trades are still kind of second, you know, option to a lot of people, you know? I wish Eli would have wore his work clothes here because he would have been dirty and covered in, in paint.
I want to be...
But a lot of times, a lot of times, we, you know, they take our young people and they point to people like us, dressed like us, and say, that's success. Well, that's success too, because he's making great money, he's working in a career that he's, he likes. And he really, you know, it's, it's sad that I can't get to, you know, and I'm not, I'm not asking you to fill my class up because I still have eight other sending schools that send kids to the Heinz Center, but if I can get one or two a year, it'd just, you know, my heart would feel better because I know that there are kids in Tipton that, that I could help. There are. And if it takes me sitting at a desk or a table outside the lunchroom to ask juniors, hey, come see me, you know? I know we have a, a day Friday where students are coming to the Heinz Center, some juniors, so I'm going to be there, and I'm, hopefully I can last a few there. And also, the other thing, I, I would like some ideas on what I can take to Senator Buck and Representative Van Nadder. What, what do we need? I mean, is it a funding issue? I mean, because looking at the report, I know the dollars are not there to just say, yeah, let's just send all the kids to the Heinz Center because I know you have to pay for that, you know? And it's, and it's not like, you know, this is a very niche trade, you know, it's not something that you guys can do here in your building. You know, I remember being a senior and being in Mr. Brown's woodshop class, you know, I loved woodworking, but I didn't want to be a cabinet maker when I graduated. So I know that there are kids that are maybe juniors in the auto shop class or the woodworking class that they're not going, they don't want to do woodworking. Not to, not to take any of your kids, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to deplete your programs that you're trying to do here at Tipton.
Well, I think, I, I will say that, you know, as changes are coming down, I mean, we send a lot of kids over too much, and we're glad to do it. I mean, that's, that's an opportunity for those kids. And I think, I, I think the hardest thing with guiding kids is just exposure, teaching them about what's out there and what's available. One thing I think we could do a little better is to begin those conversations a little earlier, particularly with, you know, our eighth grade and college and careers and different classes like that. And I, but I also think too, the way the new diplomas are structured, that should work in your favor. Because with the employability factor in, in the diploma, I, I believe that, you know, I think that really does put employability at the forefront of, of in your diploma. And so, you know, I, I think if, if you're talking to, you know, legislators, you know, again, it's hard to get that, it is hard to get that bill, you know, from Heinz Career Center because they're, they're taking almost half of our ADEM. But, we pay it because we, we know that's opportunity for our kids. And so, I, you know, I know that in Ohio and, you know, some other states, they do fund CTE a lot differently. Like you said, it, it does come directly from the state, and those facilities in other states are far better than ours. And, you know, again, it would probably do some legislators some good to go and check out some of those places because I think that, I think they would be amazed at what some of these are, what some of these places are doing, and then ask questions on how they're funded.
Yeah, and, and my biggest promoter is, is the students themselves. Word of mouth, you know? Like I said, at the beginning of March, kids are going to start driving their USIC trucks to school, and when their friends see that, then they're like, how, how can I get in this program? Well, I don't have any trucks showing up at Tipton anymore. After his, after his senior year, which was 22. Well, thank you everyone for your time, and if you want to play this last video, this is the Heinz Career Center video. I, I did this video the very first year of the program, so you'll see, and we ended up hiring all of these guys that are in the, in the video, Eli, you'll see, you'll see the classroom as well over at the Heinz Center.
Are you willing to instruct your company to be safe while they work, so that they don't cause any problems out in the public or cause any damages or anything like that? We got like gas, ACN B, cable TV, fiber, copper line, all the different things I've learned to figure out how to hook up to a line, where to hook up, as far as our instructors, they're great, they come prepared every day, they have motivation, and I can see the motivation come from them, and that's what I love about all instructors, that they come prepared and ready to make it so that everything's fair. I think it's a challenge, because you have to troubleshoot a lot of things, so a lot of like that is a challenge. Walking out the doors usually if we're going to go out and check a ticket, get your stuff on and roll out and get your stuff and go, and then work with your group, get all of it done, hand it out, mark it out, come back, talk about it for a little bit, see what you did, see if you did a good job, and then you're out of here.
That's our VR simulator that we have in Slasher.
I always try to do something outside versus pushing it up in the factory or something like that. I always remember my dad talking about it, knew that if a lot of people come on a job like this, my feet is outside, you know, I'm studying a house or a factory all day working, always excited to get out and do some things.
I just wanted to know one thing, and I'm always amazed when I, when I see you guys out on the field, and how you do that, that, put those flags in the ground. I am always amazed by that because I don't think I'm smart enough to do that, I'm always just amazed by, I know, I mean, it's pretty amazing.
Takes a little bit of practice.
I know, yeah, it's such a, it's such a cool thing to watch.
Like that first semester skill that you learn?
Oh, yeah.
Or what you learn that gap?
That's what they do, they, they go out in the field there, outside the classroom, practice it on, like.
Thank you, Darren, and thank you, Eli. Appreciate you guys coming in today. Next on our agenda is a recommendation regarding the field trip, the extracurricular activities, and the transportation fees. So Dr. Glaze, I will let you have the floor. Thank you, Eli.
Yes, thank you, Eli.
See you, bud.
Okay, this was easier to do when you were doing it, Scott. I'm technology challenged on this.
That's right.
Amen.
He knows how to do the technology stuff, that is for sure.
All right, hey, thank you very much. So, as, as you all are aware, we've had some discussions as far as impacts on, on our, our funding with SEA1. So, tonight, we're just going to walk through with you all and as well as with the community on a proposal to implement participation fees to help cover the cost of student transportation for curricular, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Again, we don't want to, we don't want to limit any opportunities for our students, that's not what this is about, but we do have to figure out a way to, to be able to continue to fund what we've been doing with, with knowing that we're going to be losing funding through SEA1. So, essentially, we're, we're basically looking at a way to cover some of these costs through a couple of these fees. So, SEA1 has significantly reduced the operation fund that pays for the daily school operations, including transportation. To keep field trips, athletics banned, FFA and student activity or student competitions intact, we need a way to offset transportation costs without cutting programs. Because again, we want our kids to be, we want our kids to be active, we want our kids to participate in, in activities, and, but we also need to have some ways to recuperate some of these funds. So, part of what we've been doing, and some of you are a member of this committee, is the Expense Review and Reduction Committee. And so we have shared a lot of information within this committee, and it's been a great committee. You guys have been wonderful as far as really taking some thoughtful looks at, at how we are, A, spending our money, and how we can look at reducing some of our expenditures, and, and I definitely appreciate all the work you're doing. So essentially, what we are looking at is really a recommendation that comes from more of a cost-sharing structure that charges participant, participation fees to families and those that are using transportation for extracurricular activities. So, once again, you know, every dollar collected in, in transportation costs for field trips, contests, competitions, and performances, again, that's just going to go to pay for just general transportation. It doesn't buy, doesn't buy uniforms, it doesn't pay people, it doesn't do anything, it's just a way for us to break even, honestly. And so, as we, as, as this becomes, you know, a bigger part of what we're doing, we're not looking to make money off of this. This is just an opportunity for us to figure out a way to reimburse ourselves for this expenditure. And one thing that, you know, we will have the ability that, you know, if there's situations that come up, you know, the, the superintendent or designee would have a way to, to waive those fees in order to, you know, make something work. And those things will happen and will come up throughout this whole, this whole experience. So essentially, just kind of the raw facts, so these are financial impacts that we're dealing with. So, transportation costs, the, the district incurs, and this is just for extracurricular, co-curricular, and field trips is around $70,000. Roughly $50,000 of that is athletic travel. So, and basically, we're getting those figures from the averages of the last three years. So, they're rough because there are some years that are a little bit more than others, and some, of course, that are going to be a little cheaper. But that's just generally where we are. Those costs have been historically absorbed by our operations fund. And so, as we're, as we're looking at this, we want to be able to do a couple of things. First of all, we don't want to do anything that disrupts transportation for our students to and from school. I know that with, with some other school corporations in the state, they, they're looking at just not having student transportation. So, parents would be responsible to, to bring their school, their, their kids and, you know, to and from school, or they're looking at a partial reduction in transportation by creating walk zones. And again, I, you know, I remember when, when I was in school, we had a walk zone, I, I walked to school almost every day because unfortunately, I was one of those guys that lived, you know, two blocks away from the elementary. But I also remember, we had really nice sidewalks, and we had people that actually cleaned their sidewalks in the snow, in, in the snowy weather. That doesn't happen so much anymore. So, I'm always a little reluctant to even consider creating walk zones for those issues because if the sidewalks aren't cleared off, or they're, they're not in a, in a good, in a, in, in good condition, kids are going to walk on the road. And, and that's dangerous, in my opinion. So, essentially, what we're looking at is the impacts of SEA1 2026, or 2025, is a reduction for us of around $280,000. This is the first year. So, we're dealing with that as of January 1. This will grow to about 1.8 million by 2031. So, the impact is significant, and I think it's important to remember, this is not theoretical, this is the reality, the, the law's already been passed. And so it's up to us to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to still offer as many services as we can, but also look at some different ways to fund them. So, basically, we want to understand, we want you to understand that we didn't jump directly at fees. This, we've had a lot of conversations, so we've looked, we've, we've had conversations about how we've reduced expenditures through reducing... uh, reduced expenditures through reducing some routes. Uh, we've also, you know, talked about, you know, how, you know, we, with the reduction of routes, that also makes bus rides longer. That's reality in, in a rural district like we live in. And, uh, and we've also, uh, looked at a myriad of other opportunities that we're going to share when we come back in February about other ways that we will need to reduce what we're spending. Uh, so the February meeting, um, there will be further recommendations. We want to get out in front with this one because we want to give people time to plan. So if we're looking at, um, charging, um, students for participation in co-curricular or extracurricular activities, we want to give people time to get plans in place to cover those, that funding. And also want to make sure we give people time, uh, to, to appropriately budget for those. So in the summer of twenty twenty-five, we eliminated two bus routes. We mentioned that earlier. And, and so we've started to make these reductions. Uh, but we do want to maintain the current levels of student transportation to and from school. And so the recommendation came down to really just charging, uh, maybe a participation fee for a co-curricular, curricular and extracurricular transportation. So estimated reimbursement would be around seventy thousand dollars, and this is how we get there. Doesn't mean this is the perfect way, just means this is a way. Um, and I'll be glad to take any kind of feedback. So we are recommending two separate structures. Uh, one would be kind of co-curricular, extracurricular participation fee, and the other would be more of a curricular field trip fee. And this is how we would go about assessing them. Um, so first of all, we want to make sure this is legal. So we did get a, um, an opinion from Church Churchill and Antrim, and they are in agreement that this is something that we can do. Um, you're welcome to read that. That's a very long and drawn-out document. Uh, but, uh, you're welcome to, you know, if you have questions, let me know, and we can definitely take a look at that. So essentially, what we're looking at is a free structure, a fee structure that looks like this. So we would have a single student participation fee. So this would be, you know, you have one student that is, you know, playing football, okay? And so for that, for football, we would assess a fee of seventy-five dollars. If you have a single student that is doing football and basketball, instead of charging double, the hundred and fifty, we would look at going at one twenty-five. Okay, so we're trying to be cognizant of kids that are doing multiple activities. And we've got the data. We have about a third of our kids that are doing a single, um, activity. And really about two-thirds of our, our kids that are, this is the kids who have filled out EventLink, uh, information, are doing, doing two or three different activities. Some of them are doing like six. I don't know how in the world they can do that, but they are. But again, good for them. You know, so if they're doing ba, they could be doing basketball and cheerleading and all these other things. So it's not, sometimes they're doing double duty, um, within a specific time period. We also want to look at it from the family perspective. So we understand that, you know, this is going to be a cost that we're going to ask parents to pay. So, um, we're looking at, if you have a family that is, a, a family, um, that you have two children doing one event, we would have a, a fee structure for that. If you have multiple events that a family member is participating in, so you've got one kid playing volleyball, uh, doing YOs, doing, you know, FFA, there would be a structure for that. So again, we're trying to make the fees accessible and attainable for families, uh, so that they have an understanding, you know, understanding of, of where we're coming from, but also knowing that we're looking out for them and trying to make this as affordable as possible. So again, what qualifies for a co-curricular, extracurricular, you know, again, band, show choir, FFA, athletics, just different, different activities like that would be considered co-curricular, extracurricular. So fee examples, I just came up with the Smith family and their, their generic family. They have one child in middle school volleyball, and they're going to pay seventy-five dollars. So that is their transportation fee for their one child. The Jones family, they've got one child that's playing volleyball and basketball and FFA. So their max is going to be a hundred and twenty-five dollars for their transportation fee. Uh, the Glaze family, they are a crazy bunch of people. Uh, they're band kids. They've got all three kids in the marching band. And so they're going to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, the Campbell family, and they're just like all these rambunctious boys. I'm just kidding. They're not rambunctious. They, they would have a max of, of two hundred dollars for, for that family as far as the transportation participation fee. Again, the second part of this would be a field trip, uh, fee for, uh, curricular activities. And essentially, this would be for, you know, trips to the zoo, trips to the children's museum, um, that we're doing as part of the curriculum. And so part of, part of that fee would be the cost of the bus driver plus forty-four cents per mile for the bus or whatever we're using to transport. Uh, we would have put a maximum cap of five dollars on that for a trip. So, uh, if you've got, um, kids that are going to the zoo in the fall and they're going to the children's, children's museum in the spring, it would be five dollars for each one of those activities. And the other part of this is with our activity buses. Uh, we would basically charge mileage for the activity bus. We do train, uh, our, we do train people to drive those activity buses. And most of those are driven by teachers. However, uh, there are some that are a little concerned about doing that. And so in that case, they would have to have a driver, and that would, uh, in turn, uh, be a charge for, for that event. So just some general idea, just some general thoughts on what are field trips and what we would consider field trips. And, um, just, just basically some examples there. Basically how it would look for field trips that with larger groups or classes that are going. And again, the one thing that we want to make sure and, and understand is, you know, we want to get with our, we want to get with our people early. So we can say, you know, TESSO or Booster Groups or Athletic Foundation or whatever, we are looking at assessing these fees. Is there a way that we can direct some of the funding, um, so that we can help offset some of these costs, uh, to our parents? That's why we're talking about this now and why we would not put it into effect for the extracurricular, co-curricular until July one. Um, so we just want to give people some time. Obviously, if we have students that are on free and reduced lunch, that would be, they would, we could not force them to pay that. Uh, but it would be nice if we could get some of the, some of the groups and organizations to offset those costs. And again, this is why we're trying to do this early. Um, we don't want students denied, um, participation due to financial circumstances. So we'll put in some, just like very much it says with the, the Church Churchill and Antrim, uh, opinion. We have to make sure that we're, we're being very proactive and talking to people about if there is a financial need that we will work with you and, and help your child to be a part of this. And that is essentially it. So what we're looking at, and, and I, I know you'll have some questions and, and I'll answer those in a second, is we would like to be able to implement the field trip, uh, curricular field trip part of this starting February first and look at the extracurricular, co-curricular, um, July one. And, um, and understand that this is not something that any of us really want to do. And, uh, in, in my conversation with Rob, as we were going over the, um, the agenda, this is not what I went to superintendent school for. Um, and, uh, so I, I, I hate this. This is against every fiber of my being, but I also understand that, um, we're to a point where we just can't continue to absorb these costs. So, any questions?
Just from the committee, and looking, we'd have to look at ways to make significant changes to the budget with the new legislation.
Yeah.
And if we can spread the pain out thinly.
Yes.
And make a seventy thousand dollar difference, this is exactly the kind of thing we're looking for, hopefully without causing a burden. And in doing just some research, I travel around the country, I ask people.
Yeah.
And not to pick on Minnesota, they're having a bad week, but, um, in a small town outside of Rochester, Minnesota, some friends of mine's kids play sports. Middle school basketball, four hundred dollars to cover uniform and referees and transfer, like, they fund the entire, the entire sports programs out of fees. And I said, doesn't that cause people to not play? And he said, oh, yeah. Like, they have trouble fielding some teams, and they've lost tennis and, and, and some sports because of, of the fees. Um, and we're, we're trying very hard not to do that. But the other option is what? Not have extracurriculars? Because it's, the money just may not be there. So I hope people understand. It's also not why I joined the board.
Exactly, exactly. And, and I did share some examples. There are other schools and other fees where what we're, we're looking at would be in line with what most of them are charging. Um, everybody has a little different way of doing it.
I fully, no, it's fine. I fully support this idea. My question is, for those kids who are free and reduced and don't have it, how are we going to make sure that they know, you know, when they come in and they see like, hey, I want to play that? And the first thing they see is a fee, and they turn around, they walk home because they think, my family can't afford this. How are we going to make sure that those kids are really aware that that is not a no to them?
Uh, part of it's just kind of a check and balance. Um, we, we know of kids that, that are qualified, for, you know, TANF, free and reduced, whatever. Um, so we have that information. We can't, of course, you know, outwardly say to them, uh, but we can be on the lookout. And, and I think that, um, it's going to have to be a, um, a communication level between, um, the coaches and our administration to make sure that we're not, we're not denying a kid the opportunity because they can't afford it. So we want to, we'll be transparent with, if you do qualify, you know, for this or that, you are not expected to pay this fee. Um, but, um, again, and we also will do our best to communicate that verbally as well as in writing.
Right. Because there, I mean, there's a fine line there that I understand, right? Because then everybody might want to qualify, and then this would be ineffective. But you think if I'm in, have an incoming sixth grade student who's never played basketball for our school before, we might not know, or a coach might not know, oh, this student wants to play basketball because he saw the fee and.
Right. Right.
Then my other second question just comes, what about clubs that, like I think you mentioned show choir, since I'm familiar with that?
Right.
We don't, like, we never travel with the school transportation, so what happens in a group like that? Are they still paying to participate?
If they're not doing, if they're not using school transportation, then there would not be a fee.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and, and again, uh, the, I, I just tried to give a wide.
Sure.
You know, variety of different organizations that could fall into that.
When are those fees assessed? So for a field trip at the beginning of the year, you'll say kindergarten has the zoo and the children's are banned, so it's ten dollars for, um, I think when you get your physical, you have to kind of say what's worse.
Right, right.
Or someone could say, I'm doing two, but then do one or, or add on one. So how, when do you plan to assess those?
We'd prefer to do that in the, in the beginning.
Okay.
Um, now, field trips might be a little different because of the, um, the timing. So if you're doing a fall field trip and a spring field trip, then it may be at the time of the fall field trip, and then again, at the time of the spring, um, which again, would lessen that burden. We're going to work with people and, you know, understanding that this is going to be expense to people. And so, you know, ideally, it'd be nice to have it upfront, but if we can't, as long as we get it at some point, we're probably going to be happy. Um, and that's something that our, our treasurers will track, and they're probably gonna, um, you know, that's going to be another burden on them. But they will be able to track that and then also keep that communication going with, um, with admin.
If a coach or the whoever's in charge of whatever club activity, um, decides they want to opt out of school transportation, will that be an option?
That's a liability that, yeah, we, that's not really an option. Um, we, we want our kids to be, you know, again, we don't want them riding in personal vehicles as various other things like that.
Yeah, the committee is about cutting expenses and raising revenues. This is one way of ra, raising revenue. We have talked about getting creative and raising the revenue. So I was just thinking down here, if there was a company that didn't feel like they were as well-known in Tipton schools as they'd like to be, trying to get their name out and do some marketing, and they wanted to sponsor transportation, we would love to take a check from any company that wanted to work with us. In full or in part, if you can think of anyone.
There, there is a bill in the legislature to advertise on school buses. So, yeah. So whether that actually happens or not, I don't know. But, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So someone else is thinking the same thing, Eric.
So that wasn't as subtle as it was in my head.
Any other questions? All right. Well, then I guess that, uh, seeing as how we're four minutes into our next meeting, we're going to go ahead and wrap up the session. And, um, I'll go ahead and call to, uh, call to order the, uh, the January thirteenth, uh, Tipton Community School Board meeting. And, uh, that'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our vision statement, growing empowered, future-ready students who are prepared for a lifetime of opportunity and success. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the Proclamation for School Board Appreciation. Um, the Honorable Mayor Schmicker is here, um, and I believe if you hit the button and the green light comes on, you are ready to rock and roll.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
President Cochran, uh, this is my third time doing this, and, uh, I, I come to you today actually with a renewed, uh, appreciation because I have a daughter who's in kindergarten this year. Uh, and so while I've always appreciated the school corporation, its board, having a kindergarten gives you that sense of true appreciation, seeing her go to school each and every day, riding the bus, uh, and then coming home, talking about her day. So, uh, this year is maybe a little more special to me. I just want to offer you guys and your participation contributions. Whereas the Tipton Community School Corporation Board of Education plays a vital role in ensuring every student in our community receives a high-quality education that prepares them for success in life. And whereas school board members are elected to represent the interests of students, parents and the community, and they dedicate countless hours to policy development, budget oversight, and strategic planning to maintain excellence in our schools. And whereas these individuals dedicate their time and expertise, often making difficult decisions that impact the future of our children and our community. And whereas January is designated as School Board Appreciation Month in Indiana, providing an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the commitment in the service of our local school board members. Now therefore, I, Keegan Schmicker, Mayor of the City of Tipton, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-six as School Board Appreciation Month in Tipton, Indiana, and encourage all citizens to join me in expressing our gratitude to the members of the Tipton Community School Corporation Board of Education for their dedication and leadership. So again, a sincere thank you from me to you, and I do have this, uh, formal proclamation to deliver to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Would you like a picture? Or we can do a picture with Rob and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Or, or we can do it in front of the vision statement?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, uh, Mayor Schmicker. And, uh, next on our agenda is the annual reorganization of the board. And with that, uh, I hand the reins over to Dr. Glaze again. Okay. Uh, at this time, the Board of Trustees will elect officers for President, Vice President and Secretary for twenty twenty-six. Uh, candidates must be nominated, then seconded, approved by the majority of the Board of School Trustees. Um, so we have the election of officers. At this time, the chair will accept not, our nominations for Board President.
I would like to, like to nominate Rob Cochran.
I would like to like to nominate Rob Cochran as president.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Sounds like he's our president.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, at this time, the chair will accept nominations for Board Vice President.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Hammerhouse.
Second.
Uh, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Cool.
Awesome. Okay. Congratulations.
Yes.
Um, at this time, the chair will accept nominations for Secretary.
I would like to nominate Kim Fage as Secretary for twenty twenty six.
Second.
All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Kim.
Congratulations, Kim.
Okay. Uh, so I'm going to turn it over to Rob.
All right, next is the appointment of the Treasurer and Executive Secretary of the Board. It is recommended that Brooke Cleaver uh, be again appointed as Treasurer. And Dawn Benefil as the Executive Secretary uh, of the Board. Looking for a motion and a second to um, have Brooke and uh, Dawn assume those roles.
I would like to recommend Brooke Cleaver to be appointed as the Treasurer and Dawn Benefil as the Executive Secretary of the Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to uh, approve uh, Brooke as the Treasurer and Dawn as the Secretary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations again. Um, and then uh, it's recommended that we maintain our current meeting date and time. Of the second Tuesday of each month at six thirty PM. Uh, look for a motion and a second to continue that.
I move to continue our meeting date and time is the second Tuesday of each month at six thirty PM.
All right, thanks, Tammy. I have a motion and a second to maintain our current meeting date and time. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, the schedule remains the same. Uh, the only thing I think we did differently last year was around four H, the fair. Is that, did we?
I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
Excellent, all right, just. All of a sudden had a one good random thought today.
Always, always good, so.
Um, okay, and then uh, the board's going to recess from our regular meeting right now for the purpose of conducting a brief. Board of Finance meeting. Can I get a motion for recess?
I move to recess from my regular scheduled board meeting.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in recess.
Okay, the Board of Finance, I get to speak again. It's so much fun to get to be this, the talker. Uh, tonight's meeting is in two parts. Uh, the second part is the meeting of the Board of Finance. That we are required to hold annually in January. Uh, we have three functions. We need to elect a President and Secretary. And then to name a depository for corporation funds. And then to receive and review um, the investment report. So, uh, we have the election officers. Uh, the Board of Finance must elect a President and Secretary. Uh, President and Secretary may be the same board members elected as President and Secretary of the Board of Trustees. Um, we will now open the floor for nominations for President and Secretary of the Board of Finance. We'll have any nominations?
Uh, I would like to nominate Rob Cochran as uh, President and Kim Fage as Secretary of the Board of Finance.
Second.
Okay. Do I have, uh. We'll go ahead and do our vote here. So um. Everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Congratulations. And uh, so also we have the designation of depositories. Uh, First Farmers Bank and Trust is the depository for the corporation funds. Uh, we currently have a checking, e-funds for school lunch, student fees, tech repair, replacement fees. Uh, sweep account savings. Um, it is recommended the Board approve First Farmers Bank and Trust. As a depository for the corporation funds. Do I have a motion to accept?
I move to approve the per, the First Farmers Bank and Trust as the depository for corporation funds.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Uh, review investments. Uh, the investment report was made available to the board members on the, during our monthly uh, financial report. Uh, this month's report for December also is is the report at for the end of the school year. Uh, that'll be something we'll review as part of the agenda later. Uh, the twenty twenty five investment earnings totaled around two hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. Uh, Tipton Community School Corporation maintains a repurchase agreement account, which is a charge card. Uh, through BMO Harris Bank. There is no action um, as far as reviewing. Uh, you're welcome to look at that as part of the uh, regular monthly meeting. Uh, twenty twenty six expenditure and review projections. Attached are detailed projections of revenue and expenditures for twenty twenty six. As set out by the seventeen eighty two notice uh, from the DLGF. Our final seventeen eighty two notice is attached in your packet. Approved appropriations for twenty twenty six is rainy day, two hundred and fifty thousand. And just as a reminder to the Board, we did that just because. We're a little unsure on how things will flow with the changes in property taxes. Um, we have debt service appropriation of three million, seven hundred and seven, or s-. Seven hundred and twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy. Education appropriation of eleven million, seven hundred and eighty six thousand, uh, twenty five dollars. And then operation fund appropriation of five million, two hundred and ten thousand and ten dollars. Our approved tax rates as part of the seventeen eighty two, our debt service was thirty nine eighty nine, so thirty nine cents. Um, the um, the operational fund uh, tax rate was uh, four, six, six, six. That kind of sounds a little scary, but you shouldn't be too fearful of that. Um, and then our total levy is eighty six cents. Uh, so um, once again, being able to maintain that lower tax rate. Uh, the twenty twenty five expenditure and percent of appropriation spent. Um, I have to uh, thank Brooke for doing an outstanding job of budgeting uh, once again. So education fund, uh, we spent around eleven million, seven hundred and seventy three thousand, five hundred and eighty one. Um, and twenty one cents. Uh, we spent uh, ninety six point four uh, percent of the appropriation. Uh, debt service, we spent uh, four million, uh, twenty one thousand, seven fifty. Basically about ninety nine percent of the appropriation. Again, we, those are budgeted pretty much to the penny because we have. Debt service that our payments are due and that's pretty much what we have um, within our budget. And then we have um, operation fund. Um, we spent uh, five million, four hundred and six thousand, six hundred and eighty. And ninety four percent of that appropriation was spent. Just kind of a historical um, tax levy. Over the last few years, since twenty twenty, basically twenty twenty, our our tax rate was ninety four cents. Twenty twenty one, ninety three cents, twenty twenty two, ninety six cents. Uh, twenty twenty three, eighty eight cents. Uh, twenty twenty four, ninety cents, and then twenty twenty five, eighty five cents, and then eighty six cents for this year. Um, earlier in our meeting, um, in our work session. Uh, Mr. Jaworski presented information on our DOAB report. And uh, as he mentioned, everything is. As good as it's going to get um, in that area. So that is the end of the financial um, part. Uh, Board of Finance part of this meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Finance?
During the Board of Finance meeting?
Second.
Okay. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Do you feel like you know so much more about finance and all the fun stuff that goes on in finance?
The good news is you don't ever have to do that again.
I know, isn't that an awesome thing? I I think it's a totally ridiculous thing to do in the first place. So I feel good about not having to do that again. So, yeah.
All right, well, I would like to call, recall to uh, order the regular business meeting. I would like a motion and a second to uh, restart the regular bit uh, board meeting.
I move to restart our regular board meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to restart the board meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are back in session. So the next portion of our agenda. Is uh, what we call Tell Me Something Good, which is an opportunity for the Board. Uh, to to talk about something they've seen either athletically, academically, or something on campus. Um, that uh, that has caught your attention. So the floor is open for that.
I would like to acknowledge uh, Patrick and Preston Lancaster. For their golfing expertise and the donation that they've made back to our community. Which will help our kids. That was great.
Yes, absolutely.
We have two senior wrestlers. Um, one hit his one hundredth win and one, I don't know if he's wrestled yet, probably. Probably has now, um, who should hit his one hundredth tonight. Uh, so that was Will Wolford and Joe Klauser.
Um, I don't know a lot about FFA just because my kids haven't participated, but. As far as I understand it, um, there's a group of kids, students, both in middle school and high school that begin practice in September at seven o'clock in the morning for. Parliamentary procedures, right? And so it sounds like really something. Super exciting at seven o'clock in the morning, but these kids have just shown to me just a real discipline and. Um, a lot of effort to something that they enjoy, something that matters. I've been told that if you watch them run a meeting. It might put our board meeting to shame a little bit, no offense, Rob.
Superintendent.
What am I just saying? Anyway, so from my understanding, there's. Um, kind of a competition that they um, both participated in, both at high school and middle school level, and the middle school advanced to the next level. And so I just wanted to recognize that. I think that's um. It's just really, just a great opportunity for them to have life skills for maybe later on. And then second of all, I would just want to um, recognize. Just Mr. Bales again, as he prepares for this eighth grade, I believe, uh, Washington DC trip and just all the effort that goes into that, that is. Um, I think it takes a lot and it's such a neat opportunity for our students to be able to experience that and. Um, yeah, just a huge thanks to him.
Um, we have two foreign exchange students here for a month from Brazil and um. I had the opportunity, one of them stayed with me for a couple of days. Um, so they were with their uh, their family for a month, but um. The person who's kind of in charge of coordinating that, Teresa, um, whatever school it was kind of fell through and they were kind of. Uh, you know, kind of scrambling to find, find a school and just so happened she runs into one of our commissioners at a meeting and they put her in contact, I think, with Dr. Glaze and. She just said how, how easy it was to work with with Dr. Glaze and Mr. Leach and how they were accommodating and they. You know, both these boys are in the school now and I think it's going great. They're about a weekend. Um, I met both of them. They're super sweet, but. Um, it's just nice to hear how how easy Tipton is to work with.
The one I had is over the holiday, um. There's a partnership between the school and the uh, local theater um, that's gone on for many, many years. And um. This year during the Christmas break, uh, we worked with Jenny and Lisa to to gain access to the uh, to the auditorium. Uh, the theater, the community theater came in at no cost to the school, sanded the entire floor, repainted the floor. Um, and really um. Spruced up the auditorium. Um, and so I wanted to acknowledge that. Partnership between a community organization and the school. Um, and uh. They do really sincerely appreciate the partnership we have, and I thought it was great of them uh, to come in and help us uh, take care of uh, of the floor that way. So.
Awesome.
Shout out to uh, to the the theater and uh, um. Chad and Rick and all the guys that were in there. So if you noticed a little more s- sawdust. Uh, uh, than than was normal on in January. So, well, great. Any other uh? Uh, uh. Tell me something good opportunities? All right. Um, next we move on. Dr. Glazer, back on the hot mic.
I know it.
The uh, Blue Future Awards.
All right, we'll have our elementary go first. And the people back there in the dark, we do actually pay the light bill. Um, for some reason, the light didn't come on. I don't know why. This is a way for us to cut costs.
All right, I think Mr. Jaworski has uh, the voicemail um, uh, ready to go. So. What date was it that you guys went to the, was it in November or early December? Early December, uh, kindergarten went to the Indianapolis uh, Children's Museum. And um. They weren't quite back from the trip yet and I, uh, Jen Cox, our, one of our secretaries says, hey, Brian, you have a voicemail you need to listen to about the field trip. And I'm like, oh, gosh, what did, what happened? And I said, you know, so um, I I uh. Listened to the voicemail and it was a uh. Professor from uh, Butler University and she had been there with some of her uh, practicum students. Talking about methods and so forth of education. And she had nothing but amazing things to say about our kindergarten. Uh, kids, our staff, our chaperones and so forth. So. I wanted uh, you guys to hear. It's about two minutes, a little bit over two minutes long. And there may be some parts you're like, oh, the the message is over, but it's not. I really want you to listen to the end. Because it's, it's actually a, it's a great message and it's a little bit funny towards the end, so. And then at the end, she actually, yeah, she gives her phone number, but then at the end she says, you can look me up. My picture's on the website. I'm a real person, I promise. Um, and so, and the other, the second thought I had whenever I, they said somebody called from Butler, I'm like. I'm pretty sure I ha- I've paid all my bills, my doctor. Bills.
Yeah.
Nobody's coming after me.
I think I paid time too, so.
Yeah. But anyway, so this, uh, today I just wanted to recognize all of our kindergarten staff, uh, teachers and paraeducators. So uh, first one, um, if you want to hand them, uh, Valerie Boyd. She's a kindergarten paraeducator.
Yes.
Erica Hawkins. Kindergarten paraeducator. Madison Holloway. Kindergarten paraeducator. And the last five here are all of our uh, kindergarten teachers. So Josh Ireland. Jenna Smith. Mara Eisenhower. Natasha Surface. And Ashley Nguyen.
Congratulations, guys.
Well done, guys. Thank you.
Mayor I-5, gotta love that.
Ms. Henry's gonna be very mad at me. Mrs. Mast is supposed to join her here, so I was going to be honoring both Mrs. Mast and Mrs. Henry, but then Mrs. Mast told me that because of her husband's work schedule getting complicated, she wasn't able to make it, she had to be mom tonight. So I'm just gonna honor Ms. Henry here tonight. So, Ms. Henry, come on up for me, okay? She'll have to go ahead and stand in for two teachers at the middle school this evening. So, she hates it. She, she, she never liked, but anyway, I'll stop talking about it, because I think I'm only making it worse. I am here this evening to chat with all of you guys about something that I thought was really great over the course of the last month, and that is related to ILEARN checkpoints, okay? As all of you guys know, especially if you have students between third grade and eighth grade, these checkpoints have been a new thing that have come up this year from the IDOE. And one of the big puzzles that I had this year is, okay, how do we take these new assessments that we have to do, make them meaningful, make the data actionable for our teachers? Just, what do we do? How do we respond to these in real time in order to make these something that's meaningful? And so, again, Mrs. Mast and Ms. Henry recently did something with them that I was very proud of and that I wanted to make sure that I showcased. So I'll talk about Ms. Henry first. So after our first ILEARN checkpoint that happened back in October, I went ahead, compiled all the data for the teachers, gave all the data to the teachers, and then they said, okay, seeing what standards students did well at, what students didn't do well at, let's go ahead and make sure that we're enacting two things. One, let's make sure that our spiral review inside of our classes are happening well, that they are targeted at the standards that students are really struggling with. I know that Ms. Henry, as well as everyone in the math department, made sure that they were really taking a look at that and making that look good. And then, the other element is our acceleration periods, which happen in the mornings from eight o'clock to eight forty-one on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We made sure that we were pulling targeted students to say, hey, we think that you are close to being able to make sure that you are meeting these standards. Let's go ahead and pull you, target some instruction directly towards you guys. Ms. Henry, what she did with her acceleration period students is, at the end of that time period that we had, and before we went on break, she said, I want to take those students that we targeted, and I want to go ahead and use the opportunity for a second test, a second opportunity for them to take the test. And her students did phenomenally well. Of those eight students that she retested in that way, seven of the eight of those kids showed growth, and six of them, who, let's not forget, were not passing before, passed for that first ILEARN checkpoint, right? And so, a quick round of applause for that. Thanks, and to bridge those gaps. Mrs. Mast, if she were here, went even one step further. She did everything that I was talking about, but then she said, you know what, I am not content with just looking at my acceleration period kids. Let's get everyone back in here for a retest. So actually, on the Wednesday and Thursday before we went on break, she went ahead and had every single eighth grader retest. And what ended up happening, the first time that the students took that checkpoint, thirty-two out of one hundred and ten kids, not a great percentage, went ahead and passed that checkpoint. The next time around, she got fourteen more kids to go ahead and be passing. And of those kids who took it, seventy-five percent of them all showed growth from the first time to the second time, which is great, and absolutely what we want to be seeing happening. Now, especially for someone like Beth Wolfert, who's been in the classroom and kind of seen the way that ILEARN kind of works with, with kids, there are some questions that I have from, and we always are gonna have questions that we're asking of these. I, I know that probably Ms. Henry even, you know, we celebrate the growth that happens, but, you know, what could we do more, and what could we be doing differently? We've got our next ILEARN checkpoint test coming up next week, so don't worry, we're gonna continue working there. I do definitely think that there are some struggles at the test, but I appreciate Ms. Henry, Mrs. Mast, and all the rest of our teachers at the middle school for making sure that we're contextualizing this appropriately of kids, utilizing that data to bridge the gaps for students. And I want to congratulate and thank Ms. Henry for that service for our kids. There you go, Ms. Henry. Yeah, come on up. Hey, let's get our picture here.
And I have the final Blue Future Award for tonight. And some of you may have heard, and hopefully we've put this out there, but we had a one hundred percent graduation rate with our, our class of 2025. That's pretty darn impressive. And, and again, we want to, we want to congratulate the class of 2025, but also thank the people that helped them to get there, which is the THS staff, and particularly our guidance counselors, because, man, it is a, a weave of craziness as part of, you know, the graduation process and the pathways, and making sure kids have what they need. And so that is, that is a crazy thing, and we are so fortunate to have so many people that are out and willing to help kids to get to that point. So again, one hundred percent graduation rate is very impressive. We went from, you know, basically a ninety-seven to a one hundred percent. So again, I'm very proud of our students for doing that. I realize that this may not happen every single year, and I think that that, but I, I am very excited to, to talk about this here in January. And again, this has been totally certified by the IDOE, so we know it's official. And we, we've kind of known it for a little bit, but sometimes the DOE will find a few little things in there that might make that percentage change, but they did not this time. So, Mr. Leach, if you'd come up, I will be glad to present this to the high school. Congratulations, you guys, on a great job.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Congratulations to all the Blue Future Award winners. This is the point where I usually make a public service announcement. If you were here just for the Blue Future Awards, you should probably leave now, because we're going to get into our consent agenda and approval of claims and things. So thank you, guys, for coming out and, and participating. And again, congratulations on, on those awards. So with that being said, we all move to our consent agenda. We got the approval of our agenda this evening, the approval of our minutes from December ninth, the approval of claims payroll from December twelfth, nineteenth, and January second, and the accounts payable claims for January of 2026. We have the approval of the personnel report, which I will read at the conclusion of this. The approval of a field trip for the physics class to Kings Island in April, and the approval of the exception of some donations. And as a board, if you haven't had a chance to look at that, again, the open-handedness and the generosity of our community is on full display within there. So get, get a chance to take a look at that. But we're looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Here is the personnel report for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-six. Retirements from our certified staff, Diane Deggan-Culp, second grade teacher, and Jenny Haynes, our choir director from the middle and high school. Those will both be effective June first, twenty twenty-six. Classified staff, we have a termination of Ronald Alexander, resignations of Brandy Hart and Cheryl Emmert, and a transfer of Heather Goodnight from third shift custodian to first shift custodian in the elementary school, and a transfer of Amanda Steiner from a substitute bus driver to a corporation bus driver effective the fifth of this month. We have recommendations for Charlotte Scally to be our physical education assistant in the high school. On our ECA staff, we have the resignation of Sam Williams as a JV baseball coach, and Adam Gillum as a girls' varsity tennis coach at the high school. We have recommendations of Bryce Brown for a JV baseball coach in the high school, Nathan Gonzalez for the boys', assistant basketball coach in the high school, and Autumn Rangenson.
Ringheisen.
Ringheisen, thank you very much, for the girls' assistant basketball coach in the high school as well. And then approval of volunteers for James Rata Bush for a wrestling volunteer, and Andrew Frankie for a wrestling volunteer in the middle school. That is our personnel report for January.
I do want to mention, one of the donations was a virtual, kind of a virtual reality welding simulator. That is so neat that our students are gonna be able to use that and kind of, get to kind of try it out without actually using a welder and kind of see if they like it. And just what a great opportunity for our students.
Totally agree.
You bet. All right. Next on our agenda, thank you for that, Andrea. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Glazier, again.
I know. I feel like I, this is my meeting. Anyway, okay. So first of all, just kind of update you on the playground. We did receive a $200,000 check from the Tipton County Foundation. We paid before January one, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six. That's the invoice essentially for the turf and, and some other pieces of equipment as part of the playground. We did have a conversation with Tesco, and they will present us a check in this meeting in a couple of months. And then all that we will have left to pay would be just essentially the labor for installation. So good progress there, and thank the board for helping us make that happen. We, the auditorium sound system, I put this in our weekly update. We, we approved the quote for $66,000. We paid it a positive thirty-three. Installation is really gonna start happening here in phases, because honestly, the spring is a pretty busy time for the auditorium. And so hopefully have everything completed by spring break, really before the high school musical is really what we're shooting for. So they have some opportunity to learn the system and learn how to make it all work. The quote includes sound system and then some wireless microphones. And when we updated the system, we did have to go ahead and get some new wireless mics, which will be very much an upgrade for us as far as our production value and everything else. So all around, a good process, and we've had a lot of good luck with Sound of Music, so we're very excited about this moving forward. I want to congratulate Lily and Cloud for the Lily Endowment Community Scholarship. Once again, it's great to have a Tipton student as the, as the award winner in that. And also want to congratulate Josie Butler, Grant Day, Brogan, always have trouble with those four, Berg, dang it, Alyssa Hoover and Noah Walker. They were awarded five of the six Tipton scholarships for the Meyerly, Meyerly Scholarship. So five out of the six were TCSC students. So congratulations to them, and what a great opportunity. Wanted to mention a little bit about girls' wrestling, regional and state. That is so early, it doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense, but that's where it is. And so Anna Lee Hood, she's a regional qualifier, and then Emerson Atkins, regional qualifier. She placed second overall in regional and will be a state finalist for the second year in a row on Saturday. So that is pretty cool, and I know we will be doing some Blue Future Awards for them once every, the season is completed. And again, we're having a lot of success with our girls' wrestling program, and certainly excited to see how these ladies are doing. The re-roof update, construction continues on the auditorium. We've had some delays with holiday and with some weather. The wind has, has really made things a little, little challenging, and I don't blame them to not want to be up there when it's crazy windy. There, there is, we are starting the gutter and downspout work this next week, so you should see the brown coming down, the blue going up. So excited about that. And once again, we're still very much ahead of schedule, and everything with that has gone extremely well. Upcoming agenda items, we'll have the recommendation from the expense reduction and review committee in February. We will also do permission to advertise for the two-year mowing bids, and then we also have a presentation by policy analytics. So that's coming up for the February board meeting. And that's it.
Great.
Any questions? All right. Next on our agenda is the departmental reports. In your packet was the assistant superintendent, the food service, technology, and our athletic report. And if you had a chance to go through that, if there's any questions, I know Adam is here, but if there's no further questions, we'll move on to the financial report from newly minted and devoted on for another year, Cleaver.
Thanks for having me back.
You bet.
Okay. As you know, we received a majority of our property tax draw in November. December eleventh, we've received the remainder of that debt service, just over three hundred and four thousand. Operations totaling two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. The State Board of Accounts audit fees for the twenty-two, twenty-four audit were withheld from our operations tax draw. Those fees totaled fifty thousand, seven fifty-two, ninety-seven. We received license excise tax of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight fifty-seven, split between debt service, a hundred and four thousand roughly, and operations, a hundred and eighteen thousand. Financial institution taxes were received totaling twenty-six thousand, three eighteen, deposited to operations. And in, I believe, September or October, we received a bulletin from State Board of Accounts advising they would no longer permit public school corporations to put C-BET or FIT proceeds into the debt service fund. It'll have to go to operations now. So that took effect in the last six months of twenty twenty-five. And for the year, we transferred five hundred and twenty-five thousand from education to operations, and ended the year with balances just a little over a million in education. Operations, a smidge over one point two million. Debt service, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven forty-eight, having made payments of two million, seven thousand, twenty-five dollars. And rainy day balances at two million, thirty-five thousand, eight thirty-three, forty-one. Interest for the year totaling two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven seventy, sixty-two.
Good. Any questions for Brooke? Having none, we'll move to old business. We have the second reading for batch ten of the CCHA Board Policy Administrative Guidelines and Forms. The following policies are for second reading and adoption this evening. They are the Pledge of Allegiance, Moment of Silence, Advertising, Sponsorship, and Naming Rights, the Prohibition of Unmanned Aircraft, Intellectual Property Ownership and Revenue, Corporation Support Organizations, Public Records, Questioning of Students and Relations with Special Interest Groups. This is batch ten. So I would be looking for a motion and a second to approve upon second reading, batch ten of our, of our new board policies.
I move to approve batch ten of our, yeah, board policy.
I have a motion and a second to approve on second reading, batch ten. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving upon second reading these batch ten policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Batch ten is approved. New business, moving on to the consideration to approve the mileage rate reimbursement for twenty twenty-six. As of January twenty, or January first, twenty twenty-six, the federal mileage rate reimbursement increased two and a half cents to seventy-two and a half cents a mile. This is the rate that our employees can use to reimburse travel related to professional development and meetings not held on our campus. The recommendation before us is to increase the mileage reimbursement to the twenty twenty-six federal rate of seventy-two and a half cents per mile. So I'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve our rate to seventy-two and a half cents.
I move to approve the mileage rate to seventy-two and a half cents per mile for reimbursement for twenty twenty-six. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the mileage rate reimbursement for twenty twenty-six to seventy-two and a half cents. Do, do any other questions on that? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The rate is increased. Next is our conflict of interest disclosure. Indiana Code thirty-five dash forty-four dash one dash one four requires the Board of School Trustees annually to sign and approve and submit the uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement. It's recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the uniform conflict of interest disclosure statements completed by Tammy Brown, Andrea Campbell, myself, Jennifer Hummerkhaus, Kim Fag, Beth Wolfert, and Eric Underwood. I need a motion and a second to approve the conflict of interest disclosures.
I move to approve the conflict of interest disclosures by the board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the conflict of interest disclosures. Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Disclosures are approved. Next is consideration to approve participation fees to cover the transportation costs. During our earlier work session, the board heard the recommendation of the Expense Review and Reduction Committee regarding the implementation and participation fees to cover transportation costs due to revenue loss from the implementation of SCA one. We are recommending two fees, a fixed participation fee for co-curricular and extracurricular activities effective July first, and a field trip fee for curricular activities effective February first. activities effective February first. Included is your packet is a memo outlining how fees are assessed and the amount. And there is also an opinion from CCHA in there on the, you know, the legal precedent for this. So I'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve the participation fees.
I move to approve the participation fees to cover transportation costs for activities and field.
I have a motion and a second to approve the participation fees. Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor of approving the fees, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Fees are approved. Consideration to reprove ref reps athletic officiating class in the second semester. With a growing shortage of athletic officials at all levels, the IHSA is encouraging high schools to offer officiating classes and certifications to fill the needed positions. At the end of the fall semester, announcements were made to gauge interest in the class, and the results were eighteen students with interested in completing the officiating course at THS beginning second semester. This course is being taught by Mr. Vester. Mr. Leach is here, as always, to answer questions regarding the class or curriculum offered by ref reps. It is recommended that the board approve the class for the second semester of the twenty twenty five twenty six school year before asking for a motion. Are there questions on this for Mr. Leach?
That's a great idea. I'm just curious. Did they provide like a curriculum then, like a whole program?
Yes, that is the ref rep curriculum. We will look at and try to get kids certified in three sports. Mr. Vester will kind of work with the kids to see what those are. The vision for that would hopefully be like softball or baseball and then football, like things like help with sports in the area. So those eighteen kids should walk out with an entry level certification, get them into youth leagues and things like that. And then hopefully they, you know, keep going with it. We get some younger officials.
We have watched some of our events. We need some younger officials.
Guys like me covering the whole basketball court, it's not pretty.
Are they paid?
The officials? We we want them to be.
The students.
Not not for the curricular piece of it or what we're providing. We're paying for their seats. But yeah, when they go out to, I mean, if the youth league for baseball wants to hire those officials, then I would assume they would be paid through those organizations, not through the school. But then we'd also be able to count those workplace learning hours as they're doing it as long as they track it. So it really can work out well if they take what they learn and actually go use it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. All right. With no further questions, I'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve ref reps athletic officiating class for the second semester.
I move to approve ref reps athletic officiating class for the second semester of the twenty twenty five twenty twenty six full year. Second.
Great. I have a motion and a second to approve ref reps. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Right. Curriculum is approved. Other matters to come before the board, that there's one advisory committee, again, for the expense reduction and review committee meeting January nineteenth at noon. And the following is our schedule of events for January and and into February already. January nineteenth, we have no school for MLK Day. On that day, the expense reduction and review committee will meet here at noon. The twenty sixth, we do have an executive session at five thirty for for all of us. And then February ninth, we have our staff PD day. There'd be no students, but I would take you up on Mr. Jaworski's recommendation in his report to try and attend one or two of those and kind of see our personal development days in action. It's really pretty cool. February ninth, yeah. And then February tenth, you can just stay here at the school because we'll have our next monthly board meeting. And February sixteenth, barring no winter vortex or problems like that, we will have no school for president's day on February sixteenth. So that is the upcoming agenda. And there's no other business to come before the board. I'd look for a motion and a second to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
It's a lot of pressure I can bring up at the day and then I have to run the meeting.
Right.
I got to get on this.